Please come forward and make their statement. And then I will ask those in attendance who oppose the application to please come forward and make their statement. As this is a public hearing, it will be necessary for those coming forward to ask questions or to speak for or against any application to please identify themselves and state their name and address for the record prior to proceeding. At the conclusion of all statements from the public and the applicant, I will close the public hearing on each application. The applicant and the public are then free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting at which time the commission will discuss each application on the consideration and try to reach a decision. Each applicant will be informed, will be notified in writing as to the decisions of this commission. The applicant and/or any aggrieved party with legal standing will have the right to appeal this decision to Superior Court within the statutory timeframe if they so desire. All decisions reached at this meeting will be available to the public the next day by either calling or visiting the Planning and Zoning Office after 9:30 a.m. See to this evening are the following Guilford Planning and Zoning Commissioners: David Grigsby, Walter Corbier, Ray Bauer, Tom Cost, Peter Goulitz, Frank DeAndrea, and our newest member, and we welcome him to the commission, is Rich Meyer. Thank you all. All right. Videographer this evening is Shannon Gale, and our recording secretary is Katie. Will the secretary please, oh, before we do that, let me just go over the town staff present, George Crawl, the Town Planner, Reggie Reed, zoning enforcement officer, and Kevin McGee, the environmental planner, is present. Will the secretary please read the legal notice?
Legal notice: Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning, that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on October 16th, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, Guilford, Whitfield, Room 1st Floor, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, for the following purposes. Number one, amendment to 273-21C, add, "In addition, the bulk storage and retail sale of propane on parcels of land containing less than four acres in area and located west of Westlake Avenue and south of U.S. Route 1 in the CD Zone is permitted." Number two, Town of Guilford, Parks and Rec, Will Thompson, property located at Chittenden Park Field Road and Seaside Avenue, map 24, lot 13, 16, 17, 18, Zone R3, Coastal Area Management Site Plan Boardwalk and Viewing Platform within 100 feet of critical coastal resource. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the office of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard, and written communications will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 26th day of September 2013, Ray Bauer, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Walter. All seven commissioners will be sitting and hearing applications this evening, since we have all seven present here, including our alternate. First item on the agenda will be the Town of Guilford, Parks and Rec. This is property located at Chittenden Park. This is a CAM site plan boardwalk and viewing platform within 100 feet of the critical coastal resource.
Commissioners, can you see at this point?
Yes.
I'm Will Thompson, I'm an architect. I live and work here in Guilford, address is 20 South Thursday. I represent the Town of Guilford to do their Chittenden Park properties. Also involved in this project is connections with New England Trail, which is sponsored by the National Park Service and Connecticut Forest and Park Association. And actually Claire Kane's here tonight to help with Forest and Park. First, just to help locate what we're talking about, over in Chittenden Park, when you get over near the ball fields, near the West River, there's where the fields end, there's a crossing area to the beach that is town-owned. In fact, a number of beach properties run up the river. It's a kind of uncontrolled crossing area, a lot of wetlands gets trampled by it. And in essence, we're looking to create a very low-profile walkway that's also accessible from the field to the back edge of that sandy area. On the sheet A1, do you have copies of the sheets? Or do you want to just, we can just go off what I have. Anyway, there's a photo montage on A1.0 that shows the existing area. Let me give you, if you don't want to file drawings, these are some photographs of that part. This is the area where this is proposed to be located. In essence, what we have is a low-lying area that's wetland, and it's been walked, you know, over for years. In fact, many years ago, there used to be a boardwalk in, is it Bathhouse?
It was Bathhouse.
Yeah, many years ago in this location. So in essence, what we're trying to do is create a more structured accessway for the public to the West River Delta. We did an A2 survey of the adjoining properties. The park is made up of several parcels of townhomes, as well as additional parcels that run up the river. On our sheet, our survey sheet, we also show the avatars. That's the A2 grade. There's a detail that circled on the A2 property survey that shows the area we did a topography. This is the T2 grade. The topography is at a 1 to 20 scale. On that same topography, we've located where the boardwalk frame, where footprint would be. And as you can see, it's a relatively compact walkway. It's about a little under six and a half feet wide. We're following the area that's been most kind of walked on over the years, so we're not impacting a lot of the sensitive species. It starts just above 4.0, which is your jurisdiction. It crosses an area of wetland, and then it derives on the back edge of sort of a dune-like element of the beach, very low. It's about 5.5 grade where it lands, and there's a small viewing platform there. We're deliberately working with the existing grades, so the existing and proposed grades remain the same. This mapping was done of the survey in November 2012, largely untouched, except the mosquito trench no longer exists. We're, we're using a system of diamond piers, very similar to what we have over Jacob's Beach, only these are slightly more robust versions based on the FEMA and engineering loads of this particular site, as well as we did soil borings to do the geotech on the, what kind of soil ratings we have. The, the walk crosses the wetland, and then we have this viewing platform. And the platform itself is just under 25 feet wide, 12.9 in its deepest location, nine foot at its end, where it's smaller. The platform's only going to sit several inches above the sand grade, so it's roughly 5.75 is the elevation of that finish. The framework is pressure-treated framing. The decking is EPE decking, 1x6 decking. The whole assembly is designed to be ADA compliant. The, the whole assembly is also less than 30, 30 inches or less to grade. So it doesn't require rails, and it is not a ramp. It's less than 2% rise, so it's a pathway. And we've been very deliberate about those kind of dimensions, so that it's very unobtrusive. In fact, if you look at the photos, you can see where the marsh grass, it's virtually going to be screened unless you're at it by the, by the plank. Now typically DEP likes to set things up, so it's a bulk plank. We've had two meetings. We had an initial meeting before we started the design with John Goucher, about a year and a half ago, I'll give you the exact dates if you need it, and very recently with Krista Romero, who's the analyst on the project. They're very supportive of it. At this point, we're waiting on one last of our local commission's letter back. Shellfish has already signed off, Army Corps of Engineers have no, signed off, they have no feeling of jurisdiction of this. I anticipate DEP somewhere two to four months, just based on how long their process is, but we've done all the important meeting and checklist of their items. And I can give the commission any copy if you need of that. The other thing that's fairly significant here is this project is designed to act as the trailhead, the southern trailhead of the New England Trail, which runs from here up into Manhattan. And I'd like to have Claire Kane, who is sort of very much involved with the New England Trail, to speak briefly for you, just to make you more familiar with what happens.
My name's Claire Kane. I'm representing the Connecticut Forest and Park Association. I live in Niantic, Connecticut. As Will mentioned, the New England Trail is a 215-mile hiking trail. It's one of 11 national scenic trails in the country, so pretty significant designation that was put on the trail by Congress in 2009. This is one of 11, and all of the national scenic trails across the country have a very distinct beginning and end. And we've been working south towards Guilford for a number of years to develop the trail route. We've gotten down to Chittenden Park and working with the Parks and Rec Commission and with local volunteers. Chittenden has kind of proclaimed as the gateway to this trail system, and we wanted to do something really significant and signature at the park as the entrance to the trail. We think it's pretty significant that a national scenic trail is going to meet an estuary of national significance on the Long Island Sound. It's really rare in the national scenic trails community. We think that this is really the crown jewel of the trail system in Connecticut, and we're really excited for this project to really have a significant beginning down here in Guilford.
Thank you.
Any questions? I have maps of this if you're interested also.
Thank you very much for your comments.
That's the majority of what I want to present, if it would be more a question, you know, if the commissioners have any questions.
Okay. We did receive a few letters. Let me just read those into the record prior to going to questions from the commissioners. First one is from John Goucher, dated September 17th, regarding this application. "In addition to being reviewed at the local level through the coastal site plan review process, this proposal requires a structures dredging and fill, it's an SDF permit, from this office for work in tidal wetlands and below the coastal jurisdiction line. This office is currently reviewing the SDF permit for consistency with all applicable state policies, including policies that minimize adverse impacts to tidal wetlands. Regarding the areas landward of the coastal jurisdiction line, we have reviewed the proposal for consistency with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies, and have no comments for the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration. The coastal, Connecticut Coastal Management Act encourages general public access, which this project is providing, and this regard it is fully consistent with the Act. We recommend that any approval include a condition that the applicant receive a state SDF permit prior to the commencement of any work at the site related to this proposal, and you're okay with that?"
Yeah, we've already applied that, and Krista Romero is on the process.
Okay, very good. We also have a letter from Kevin McGee, the Town Environmental Planner, dated October 16th. Kevin, since you're here, I'll ask you to please read this into the record, if you would.
At the Guilford Park, the Guilford Park and Zoning Department, along with the Connecticut Forest and Park Association, is proposing to install a boardwalk and a viewing platform at Chittenden Park to the sand dune. The proposed boardwalk will be constructed between 0 inches and 30 inches above the existing grade. The coastal resource policies applied to this project area are general resources, beach and dunes, coastal hazard area, tidal wetlands, and water-dependent uses. The construction of the boardwalk meets an important goal of the Coastal Management Act of encouraging public access to coastal waters for public recreational use enjoyment, which includes fishing, hiking, boat launching, birding, and wildlife observation, and general passive enjoyment of scenic waterfront coastal views and vistas. This project also follows one of the recommendations of Town of Guilford Municipal Coastal Program Plan, which, which requested strictly controlled usage of trail and paths with signage and design elements to reduce damage at Chiappi and Chitlin Park, Trolley Road, and Chitlin Park. The construction of the boardwalk will have an adverse impact to the wetlands located underneath the boardwalk, however, the existing footpath across the tidal wetlands is creating a greater impact by people compacting the tidal marsh path and widening the path to avoid stepping in the wet areas. The boardwalk will provide a controlled access across the tidal wetlands to the top of the sand dune. With the installation of the boardwalk, the area of disturbed tidal wetlands within the existing path should regenerate up to the edge of the proposed boardwalk. The construction of the boardwalk utilizing the diamond piers will also reduce impact to tidal wetlands and adjacent sand dunes. The boardwalk is proposed to be constructed in a FEMA-weight velocity zone. The application indicates that the foundation system and structure meets the FEMA standards. In order to mitigate impacts to the construction of the boardwalk and coastal resources, I recommend to the commission that, as a condition of approval, that state pay bales be used instead of silt fence. The site plan indicates that silt fence will be installed around the perimeter of the work area within the area of tidal wetlands. Installation of silt fence will create an adverse impact to the tidal marsh. Two, the Town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified and expect the sedimentation erosion control measures. Three, waste materials generated from the performance of the work shall be cleaned up daily and to be disposed of at an upland site approved for disposal of such materials."
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And are you okay with those conditions?
I've been walking the site with Ms. Romero from DEP. DEP requested that we do not do any sort of sediment control in the wetland zone, that we only do it in the work staging area. So we've since updated this plan to remove the silt fence area completely from the wetland zone, and, but we, we've called out how that, the staging areas would be controlled. So I can just, I could potentially just give you that revision.
Okay.
That would make basically both authorities, we'd be complying with the care of the wetland area.
Hey, Kevin, you're okay with that?
Thanks, Charlie.
Okay, very good. All right, I'll ask the commissioners if they have any questions regarding the application?
Just to repeat the, what you just said, the no pay bales or silt fence in the wetland area, only, only in the work area?
Only, the only place, and I haven't called out right here, is, it's basically the edge of the playing field, right before the wetland flag, and it's called out right here on the supply.
And my only other question, Mr. Chairman, is that the elevation, you're confident, DEP at a lot of other sites, like you mentioned, has some, some higher elevations when it comes to, you know, sort of above growth kinds of elevations for walks? And you said that you're confident that, that from your meetings with them so far, that this is...
That there's an understanding, that, that we, we do not want the assembly to be above 30 inches. And a big part of our meeting with Ms. Romero was to look very specifically what plant-like would or would not be impacted. And Jeff Shamas, who is our, our wetland scientist, also provided a more finite inventory adjacent to the boardwalk for her subsequent to that meeting. And based on all that, Ms. Romero said that she plans to write a report that she feels is a reasonable trade-off in, to not have the height, but that enough other vegetation will come in, which from our standpoint is, is integral and critical to the plan, is that it's low. Unlike a lot of dock issues where we run into these high docks, we're, we're trying at all costs to avoid them. So the short answer is yes, I am comfortable that we're all on the same page about that. Until final approval, I don't believe it, you know.
Of course. So that, so you believe that the SDF and everything else that DEP is dealing with will be completed in two to four months?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are the, are there any other questions from the commission? David?
Just a quick question of staff. Did they require any variances? Have we pondered whether this qualifies as a structure that's...
We, we receive variants.
We do have a variant, yes, that's a part of the...
For the, for the new building code, it was out of this June.
Did I miss that? Do we have a copy of the variants? Do they have a variance for subcock from coastal resources?
Yes, we, we do have it.
Okay, so the...
That was done in August.
ZVA entered that in August. Okay, and that's a matter of record, since that's been filed, and the lay of record's okay.
Not that we have it.
Any, any other questions from the commission at this point in time? If not, I'll ask the public, is there anybody in the public who has a question about this application? Okay, hearing now, I'll ask, is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone wishing to speak against the application? All right, final opportunity, any questions or comments from anybody in the room? Okay, hearing now, we'll close this application and move on to an amendment to section 273-21.
Thank you.
Thank you. Added, "In addition, the bulk storage and retail sale of propane on parcels of land containing less than four acres in area and located west of Westlake Avenue and south of U.S. Route 1 in the CD Zone is permitted." Jack?
Good evening, my name is Jeff LeBeedie. It's my proposed amendment to the zoning regulations, section 273-21, paragraph C. It's designed to allow the bulk storage and retail sale of propane on a parcel of land located on the west side of town, less than four acres in area, located west of Westlake Avenue and south of U.S. Route 1 in the CD Zone. And that, we're requesting that that be permitted as of right.
Okay, can I just ask, can everybody here, okay, I'm not sure, Jeff, if the mic is on, or if, perhaps it's not close enough.
Is that better?
Yes. Maybe, maybe you can just repeat what you had initially said, so we're looking at...
I'll do my best, I don't know exactly where.
Okay, thank you.
I submitted this requested text amendment to the zoning regulations to section 273-21, paragraph C, requesting that language, allowing the bulk storage and retail sale of propane in the CD Zone be permitted on parcels of land containing less than four acres in area and located west of Westlake Avenue and south of U.S. Route 1. We're asking that it be permitted as of right. The, I have Rob Sonnixon of Waldo and Associates LLC here to go through the process that we went through in identifying or drafting this proposed text amendment to the regulations.
Okay, thank you. Just one quick question. In that zone, within the area that you talk about, how many lots or parcels are that could actually meet those requirements? Is it one or two?
One.
One, okay. All right, thank you. All right, please.
My name's Rob Sonnixon, I'm with Waldo Associates, 89th State Street in Guilford. And what I'm going to be talking about tonight is the process that J.J. Sullivan Incorporated followed to evaluate properties in the Town of Guilford that had a potential, in their minds, to be the location of bulk storage of propane. The zones that we looked at are the zones that were in the Guilford Code, the zoning regulations, that allowed coal and fuel oil storage. They are the C4 Zone, the CD Zone, and the I1 Zone. We expanded our investigation to also include the I2 Zone because Hocon Incorporated, in 2006, was approved to add a 30,000-gallon propane storage tank on their property on Soundview Drive. They are located in the I2 Zone, and the I2 Zone is not a zone in which coal and fuel oil storage are permitted. So it appeared that in 2006, the town was willing to expand the, the storage of propane to the I2 Zone, so we looked at the I2 Zones also. And so, and since the 2006 approval in an I2 Zone for Hocon, and Eden Industries was approved in 2011 to have 75,000 gallons of propane storage on Soundview Road in Zone I1, the first area, it appeared that the town was inclined positively toward the storage of, of propane in that Soundview area, so that was really the first place that we looked. I brought along a copy of the zoning, of the town zoning map. It's pretty big, and I don't know whether it was, I think I might just put it on the floor and leave it up against the... Okay, well, it's a little bit hard to, if you can put it up on the top, then it's liable to flop over, Jeff, that's the problem. If you can hold it...
It mainly concerns...
Okay. Yeah, and that's right, I wanted to be, this is the hotspot in the town, it's the lower section of town, and there, there are a total of one, two, three, four industrially-zoned areas in the, what I'll call the southern part of town. They are, those four areas are also in the Coastal Area Management District. And as we know, there are, we highlighted the CAM area on the map. So those properties are both regulated by the underlying zoning, but they also have the restriction that's included in our CAM regulations that fuel oil storage can only be expanded on existing facilities. And that's a, a very restricted, we do have Hocon, we do have the Eden Industries, and we do have J.J. Sullivan on River Street, that are all existing fuel storage facilities. But if you're not on an existing fuel storage facility, the CAM regulations prohibit the introduction of fuel storage. So the first area that we looked at was, was Soundview. There was that, there were conversations between J.J. Sullivan and the owner of 373 Soundview Road, which is the parcel that's split by Soundview Drive, and it's on the corner, across the street, if you would, from the postal service facility, it's right where you turn the corner on Soundview Drive. That parcel, half of it is on the north side of Soundview Drive, and half of it is on the south side of Soundview Drive. The north side has a building, the south side has nothing, and they said, hey, come on down and take a look at the south side here. I did, it's almost all wetland, and the impact of the wetland of getting onto any upland that's on that parcel, we felt was, was prohibitive. The same with the Bartlett Tree property, which is next to it. It's, it's covered with wetlands, and it really didn't have the characteristics that would be, CAM aside, it didn't have the characteristics that we felt was appropriate for our use. There are also a number of available open parcels on Soundview Road farther to the north, closer to Boston Street, and there are some that have signs on them, and they are available. We looked at them, but they are directly across the street from residential properties. And there's a high-density residential development, all on Sperry Drive, Raymond Road area, up in here, as well as on the other side of East Creek, and... And that coupled with the CAM restrictions, we really felt that those I two zone parcels were not feasible. So leaving there, we moved to the next area, which is the I one zone on the north side of the railroad station, and the I two zone on the south side of the railroad station. The north side is completely developed. There's no available land in I one. The south side, the only open land that's available in the I two district is completely wetland. So there's no available land in that particular industrially zoned area in town. With moving on, we looked at the I one zone that is Navtech and Aeropaving on the west side of Whitfield Street. There is one very narrow five-acre parcel that is between Navtech and the Aeropaving property, but we didn't look at it too much closer because we were confident that that area has wetlands on it. It really wasn't listed as being available, and we felt that that really wasn't a particularly appropriate location, and it was in CAM again. So that really drove us away from any of these parcels. The last, the final parcel that's in CAM, in the I one zone, it is the, the Clinipad property, which is located right here, at the corner of South Fair Street. And we looked at that property, it's in South Fair Street and High Street, we looked at that property. It's currently developed. Its appraised value is extremely high, and it's in CAM. So we saw that as not being at all an appropriate area to look for Sullivan's needs, which are locating propane bulk storage. It really needs to be a vacant parcel of land. It's not business, from a business perspective, it's not feasible to go into and exist. That was one of the things with the Bartletree property down on Soundview, there's an existing building there. And, and the cost of taking, going into an existing building and, and demolishing it so that you can put bulk propane storage really made a lot of these properties economically unfeasible. So that kind of, that, that took care of every industrial zone property in the southern part of town. So we moved then to industrially zoned properties that are not in the CAM area, because we felt that there was a much greater opportunity because of the restrictions in CAM. We started out by looking at the I one zone, which is the location of Pinchbeck's Rose Greenhouse. And there are a number of other I one zone properties that are sort of north of the T S zone, that's along Route One, west of Goose Lane. There aren't any undeveloped parcels in that area. And most of them, the, the I one zone section is a part of a property that's got, also got some T two zone on it. And certainly, the Pinchbeck Rose Greenhouses weren't looked at as being anything that would be feasible to examine more closely. So we went north of I ninety-five, the area, the, the large industrial area that's owned I two, west of Goose Lane and east of State Street. The eastern part of that, adjacent to Goose Lane, is already developed with a number of, of industrial properties, but there is a lo, large area of undeveloped land, zoned I two, off to the west. The problems are, is that the parcels, they belong to the Pinchbecks and to Finesello. The parcels are very large, and there's no access currently. Access is going to be a big problem to get into that area. We saw this, that industrial area is having the most potential for development in the town, but it's not the kind of thing that J.J. Sullivan would be developing. They're not going to get a small parcel out of, they're not going to cut up one of the large parcels that are there, and for a small area that they would be able to store their bulk propane on it, what they really need is to have that area developed as an industrial park, and they might be able to obtain a lot in it, but that's a long-term project, and Sullivan's is in a business situation that they would like to locate bulk, bulk for business purposes and to keep their competitive position, and they would like to move forward in the near-term future on development of a site in Guilford. So that, that site was, was, we moved on. The next I one zone is the area around the interchange of Route seventy-seven and the, I ninety-five. On the east side, it's all developed with office park and office buildings. On the west side is the public safety complex and the racket club. There's no available land in that I one zone. We moved further west, and there's an I two zone that is east of Long Hill Road and is divided by Hubbard Road. And in that location, Sullivan's act, also had conversations with the property owner who owned the most southern property in that I one, I two zone. They examined it, they found that the property was much larger than they really needed, and as a result, the price of the property, the asking price of the property, was too high to make it economically feasible for them, so they passed on that property. While they were doing that investigation, they thought they found a vacant parcel immediately adjacent to the safety zone, but further examination proved that it was actually a part of the safety zone property. So the rest of that I two zone is completely developed. There's no available open land that could be developed for the Sullivan's purposes in the I two zone. It's not a permitted use, but we still investigated it because of the, the Hocon situation on Soundview. So that was the industrial zones, all of the industrial zones in the town of Guilford. And none of them offered anything that was a feasible alternative for the use that, that J.J. Sullivan wanted to, to include. So we, we moved to the C D zone, because as I said before, the C D zone was the only other zone that allowed coal and fuel oil storage. And the C D zones are scattered around town, and we very quickly went through a number of them. There's the, the location of the town hall annex and the Guilford Savings Bank on, on the green. Didn't seem like a real George location to investigate in detail. And there was also the Green Gallery parcel, which probably wouldn't be looked unfavorably. So those are two. There's another one where the old Hitchcock Chair Factory Store was, up in the public, near the public safety facility, but that's completely developed. Once again, we're not going to be going in there. It does, it just doesn't make sense with an existing developed building. And then there's the, the C D zone down by the Town Arena, but, you know, we didn't even spend any time looking at that to speak of. One, the, the C D zone that we did look at, that proved to be most intriguing to us and seemed to have the most feasibility initially, was a large C D zone east of Moose Hill Road. There are three parcels that are zoned C D in that area. Initially, J.J. Sullivan was aware that the Old Broadway Masonry Supply property was available, and they thought that that would possibly be a, a very good location for them, for a number of reasons. First of all, there's already propane sales that has been taking place on that property for years as an accessory use for Old Broadway. They looked at it and talked about it quite a bit, found that it too is, is a large parcel. And we found that the, what the asking price was, and it really was outside of their, a feasible price for them to pay for their needs. And there are some other sort of collateral issues going on with that parcel that we just didn't find a way to really address. One is that there's a driveway to a residential portion of the property that goes across the C D portion of the property. And that was going to clearly be something that would be, an issue that would be hard to grapple with if we, if we moved forward on it. So that parcel was determined to be unfeasible. The, the final piece that we looked at was the two-acre parcel at the corner of Moose Hill Road and Route One. The parcel appeared to be of adequate size to locate a propane bulk storage facility. There are wetlands on the property, but we considered that we'd be able to design a facility without encroaching into the wetlands. The property's not in the CAM district. It's adjacent to a commercial prop, parcel that has historically sold propane, and it's not close to the town center or the historic district. We took a look at it today, and we found out that Soundview Avenue is about a mile and a half from the green, the center of the historic district. This parcel is three miles away from the town center historic district. So it certainly isn't located near the town center or in a historic district. It's developed. The area of the C D zone is developed with much less density than many other locations in town. It's located on Route One, a relatively short distance from interchanges on I ninety-five that would serve as a supply route for propane to arrive at the site. So all of those factors put together led J.J. Sullivan to determination that this, that parcel at two seven seven two Boston Post Road was best, the best suited available parcel in the town of Guilford for propane bulk storage. I think we can take that down now, Jeff, and I'm just going to put up an aerial photo that we, that we did, and you probably won't be able to see it real well, but I can bring it over and show the commission. Yeah, one inch, yeah, we'll just bring it over and show the commission. This is a, if one inch is equal to, this is the subject here. And what you can see from looking at it is that there are several vacant open land, there's, there's a significant amount of open land in the area. There is residential development in the area, but the size of the lots is generally large, so it's much less dense than any other port, many other portions of Guilford. Now, and we're not talking, I'm just, to, I want to go on the record, we didn't look at anything north of Route eighty, because all the land north of Route eighty is residentially zoned. We'd have to be going in there and creating a new zone, and it's just too far away from the transportation routes to make it feasible. So yes, there's some sparse development, large areas of open space north of Route eighty, but this area that on the west end of town is what we felt was really the least densely populated area in Guilford, in, in the, the southern half of the town.
Up is south on that map, or?
I'm sorry?
Up is south on this, on the one we're passing around?
Yes.
Up is south, yes.
Now-
What's, what's next to which here?
Oh, really? Oh, Broadway, right there. While we were doing all of this investigation here in Guilford, we also looked at the adjacent towns, Branford, North Branford, and Madison. What we found was that in Branford, the maximum storage volume for this type of facility would be limited to ten thousand gallons. In Madison, the limit is twenty thousand gallons in the light industrial zone. Both those volumes are considered to be too low for a viable propane bulk, bulk storage facility. As, just as an example, ten thousand gallons is the volume that is carried in one transport. So from a management perspective, it just doesn't make sense to limit yourself to those kinds of volumes. You really need more. Hocon has sixty thousand gallons. Eden is approved for seventy-five thousand. Those are the kind of volumes that make, from a business perspective, make viable bulk storage facilities. The town of North Branford permits bulk storage of fuel in the B one and the I two zones, and we reviewed available property, parcels, and it indicated there's an area along one thirty-nine, sort of up near Rose Farm and the Van Wildens that is some property. But there weren't any available, open, available parcels in that area. And there's also an industrial park south of Route eighty, but there were a couple of large pieces that were available, but really nothing that suited the Sullivan's needs. And the most significant reason that opportunities in other towns were not more aggressively pursued was that J.J. Sullivan is and has been for almost ninety years a Guilford business, and they want to remain a Guilford business that is not forced to relocate in another town. So that, those are the, those are my comments for this evening. I do have with me a, a site map that shows the parcel, that shows the wetlands on it, that shows the existing house that's on the parcel. And I have on the back of it, but, and we won't go into this in any detail, but just to show that we did take it seriously, we have a layout of bulk storage facility with all of the turning radiuses, all the access points. It has a building that could be used for retail, a thousand gallon retail, adequate parking in the front, all with no encroachment into the wetland. We will have to get a wetland permit on this property, but we don't think that we, we would show that there'd be any negative impacts to the wetlands on the site. So that concludes my presentation. I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff. This is the letter that I wrote. I'm going to give, like, the original to Katie and their copies for each of the commission members. They're passing around that with you.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thanks very much. And I, I'll be here, obviously, to answer questions as we go along.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you. So following those comments that showed the process, the review process that we went through prior to submitting the text amendment, now I'm going to give you the reasons why we believe the commission should adopt the proposed amendment. First, the commission has approved the bulk storage of propane on other parcels of land in town as recently as two thousand and eleven, so it's not as though we're introducing a use that doesn't already exist within the town. We've been, we've examined, as Rob mentioned, every other industrial or commercially zoned property in town to determine the feasibility and suitability for the bulk storage and retail sale of propane. And we've identified this property that would be impacted by the proposed amendment as the most suitable location for the bulk storage and retail sale of propane. The property's located in the area, in an area of town that is not densely populated. It is approximately twice the distance from the center of town as the two approved bulk storage propane facilities on Soundview Road. The subject property is not located near, within, or adjacent to an historic district as determined by either the town of Guilford or the National Register Historic, Historic District. Property is not located in the coastal area management zone. The west end of the Boston Post Road has been an area that the town of Guilford and this commission have sought to develop with commercially viable businesses for a number of years. The adjacent property at twenty seven, twenty-three seventy, or twenty-seven thirty, rather, Boston Post Road, already operates an onsite propane filling station. It has a, a bulk tank on premises. The adjacent property at twenty-seven thirty Boston Post Road, the old Broadway Masonry Supply Facility, is the subject of a foreclosure action, and the business located on that site appears to be struggling. The property impacted by the proposed amendment is also currently being foreclosed- The property impacted by the proposed amendment is also currently being foreclosed by the lender, which holds the first mortgage on this prop, on 2772. The structure on the property appears to have been abandoned, and the property is sporadically maintained. The property impacted by the proposed amendment is already in the CD zone, which permits the bulk storage of coal and fuel oil as of right, and is therefore zoned for commercial development. The introduction of a bulk propane bulk storage and retail sale facility would not be an unreasonable expansion of the uses permitted on the property and would permit the creation of a commercial enterprise well-suited for the location in an area that is currently economically distressed. My client has a longstanding locally owned, is a longstanding locally owned and operated family business with a proven track record of community service, support for community activities, and, most importantly, the proper care and maintenance of its facilities. We believe that the proposed amendment to the zoning regulations to permit the bulk storage and retail sale of propane on the parcel of land that would be impacted by the proposed amendment represents sound planning for the town of Guilford and is in keeping with the comprehensive plan of development generally and the commercial objectives of the CD zone currently applicable to this site specifically. Among other things, Section 273-21A of the Guilford Zoning Code provides that the purpose of the Commercial Design District, or CD zone, is to encourage the most appropriate use and high-quality design in existing or new, I added the emphasis on new, commercial land development, and to allow appropriate and controlled expansion of commercially zoned property. This property is already zoned for commercial use. Approving the proposed amendment would be in compliance with both of the above referenced positions, provisions of Section 273-21A, and that the proposed amendments would allow the controlled expansion of the use of the impacted commercially zoned property and would encourage new commercial land development. The adoption of the proposed amendment would also allow greater competition to serve the energy needs of Guilford's businesses and residents. As has been previously pointed out to this commission in prior hearings, propane is a more affordable and domestically plentiful fuel source than home heating oil. Most new construction now includes heating by propane, and many existing homes are converting from oil to propane as their main source of heating fuel. In addition to the furtherance of the planning objectives already described, permitting the bulk storage and retail sale of propane on this site will benefit the general public by better ensuring that there will be a locally controlled, plentiful supply of propane for Guilford's residents and businesses in the years to come. This amendment would also benefit the town and the properties neighboring the impacted site by facilitating the transformation of a decaying residence into a thriving, well-maintained commercial enterprise. From a planning perspective, the proposed amendment would allow this transformation to occur in an area that the town and this commission have From a planning perspective, the proposed amendment would allow this transformation to occur in an area that the town and this commission have already designated as a commercial site in an area that the town has long sought to develop commercially. For all the foregoing reasons, we respectfully request that this commission adopt the amendment as written. I can submit this letter, which is basically written in format of what I just wrote.
Okay. Is there anything else the applicant would like to present at this time?
Okay. We did receive a letter from the Guilford Chamber of Commerce dated October 15th related to the application. Dear Commissioners, I write to you today in support of the request for amendment to 273-21C to add language regarding the storage and retail sale of propane that is scheduled to be decided at the upcoming Planning and Zoning Meeting. As a Chamber of Commerce, our Board of Directors and members support initiatives that will promote the launch or continuation of businesses within Guilford. We believe that adjusting the language to permit this business use on the, on the particular parcel located in the CD zone would allow for expansion of a commercial opportunity in an area that would benefit from business development. In economic times such as these, it is imperative to be flexible and innovative in forecasting and long-term planning, and we believe permitting an area to have greater flexibility of use will be beneficial to both the business community and the town. Thank you for your continuing efforts to keep our town safe and business-friendly. Best regards, Janet Tester, Executive Director.
Questions from the commission of the applicant?
No questions.
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Sonnerson, in your drawing, you said that you went over very carefully all the turning radiuses and making sure that everything would fit nice. In your illustration, what are the sizes of those tanks?
We were showing 230,000-gallon propane storage tanks.
So you're shooting for 60,000 gallons in storage?
That was the, that's, I would call that the model. There are some places that only have 30, but really from a, from a business, from having enough storage, what you want to do is control the storage at 60,000 gallons. If you look around the state, we went through all of the facilities in the state in a long hearing last year. The vast majority of them are in that kind of order of magnitude.
Can I just say, George, you or maybe the applicant, the other facilities that are in town, do you know approximately how much storage capability they have?
Yes.
But you could just?
Well, Ocon has 60,000 gallons, 230,000-gallon tanks on Soundview currently, and Eden has an approval for a total of 75,000 gallons on their parcel on Soundview.
Okay, thank you. Rich, any further questions?
This, this is above ground storage, or do they make propane below ground storage?
These are above ground. Above ground storage is the standard in the industry. And another, going back to the previous hearing, there is something that you can do called mounding the tank, which is burying it in, still above ground, not subterranean, but burying it in a, sort of in a mound. But it is not considered, it's not considered to be, from the industry perspective, it's not as good as having the tanks above ground.
So, so I clearly can visualize what you're talking about. How, what are the physical dimensions of a 30,000-gallon tank? Are they 20 feet high, 15 feet high?
They're 11 feet in diameter. The total length of the tank is about, if I can read my plan. It's 25 feet from the, I think that says 47 feet, but a total of 47 feet long, 11 feet in diameter.
And these would be plainly visible from US Route 1 as you're coming into Guilford. That would be one of the first things you would say, yes?
One of the things that the site plan had that we thought was, was sort of a good feature was that we're proposing a peak roof building between Route 1 and, and the tanks.
This is Route 1, okay, right up here.
So basically visually, you would be able to catch a glimpse of them from some, a couple of locations, but as you're driving by, the, the building would prevent you from seeing them. The peak roof of the roof of the building would be higher than the top of the tanks. But that's just, this is just a conceptual site plan. I just wanted to bring it along to show that we really did look at this parcel seriously to make sure that it worked from a technical perspective. I was concerned that we weren't going to be able to beat the setbacks and things like that, or that we were going to have to directly impact wetlands.
And just so I, my final part, I'm sorry to take you each time. You're, you're shooting for, and you're saying your top limit is 60,000 gallons, not more than that.
That's what we should, we're showing on this site plan.
Right, but I'm saying your application, are you shooting for more than 60,000 gallons?
Well, this is just a request for a modification to the zone, so they're not here with the site plan, and at this point, they don't, they don't.
You would have to come back with the site plan showing all the details you were proposing, and that would be the time that we could specify.
I mean theoretically, the way this is written, they could put in 10,000 or 150,000 if the, you know, fire, the NFPA code would permit. So just, so just to give you, they're not bound by any particular number, the way this is written at the moment.
Along Richard's line, isn't the east side or the west side of that property where Moose Hill Road, Moose Hill is one-way off of?
That's correct.
At that location, Moose Hill is one-way going south.
South.
And that whole side of the property right now is, is pretty, I mean, it's, it's old. Is it brush or whatever, but I don't even think you can see that property from
I'm not a
The piece where your hand is there, I mean, it's, it's all, it's all densely covered.
My, my understanding is that, I mean, having driven it, driven it a number, for a number of years, it's a hill, and it kind of slopes down here as you come through, as you're heading east on Route 1, coming from Branford, there's a hill, and it's kind of overgrown, and then you come through the intersection with Moose Hill Road. And the sightlines along Route 1 are very difficult, which is the reason that Moose Hill Road is a one-way street here, because getting, making a left turn on Route 1 is challenging. And so then you'd have, you'd come by here, and then you have the parking area, the structure, and then the tanks at the rear of the property. And then coming from this way, you have Old Broadway, and then continue on towards Branford.
Any other questions in the commission at this point in time? Come back to Frank, do you have one? Data?
Sure. Question to snap up. How did this get noticed in terms of public hearing? Is this treated as a zoning amendment or as a zoning map amendment? Because that's, the text would imply it's a zoning amendment, but the discussion seems to be rather particular to only one specific parcel. So is this a zoning map amendment? Is it text amendment? Even though it only applies to one parcel?
Correct. There's no, there's no notice to adjoining property owners or?
Okay, so no, no notice went out to adjoining property owners or anything?
Only the public hearing notice in the newspaper.
Only the public hearing notice in the newspaper, and that was the text of the notice that said, "CD zones, less than four acres, west of West Lake Avenue, south of", so you got to be pretty bawled to figure out that this might be this parcel.
Well, was, did it meet, but it meant the requirements of the code, right? I'm just, I mean, did this meet the zoning regulations? I mean, you may wish they were different, but they did do what they were required to.
Well, that's, that's another question then, because under, I mean, the CD zone is a weird zone, and in fact, it's a zone that we've been attempting to, the plan was to phase out the CD zone. So when we talk about the CD zone, it says that under 273-21B2, "Public hearing, the commission shall hold a public hearing on any petition for a CD zone in accordance with 273-109." Doesn't specify what the nature of that public hearing of a CD zone is. It says you have to do it in accordance with 273-109, which talks about regulations including zoning map amendments, having notice be sent to people at 500 feet. So I'm just trying to get a
This is already, this is already a CD zone. This property is
No, I know, but it says, "The commission shall hold a public hearing on any petition for a CD zone." Doesn't specify whether it's creating a CD zone.
Mr. Grigsby, I believe that's a subsection of Section B.
Yep.
Which is where you apply to have his own converted to a CD zone.
Right. Well, it says, "The CD zone shall be for a particular commercial, limited residential uses, which shall apply to a particular area, including existing, only after petition or a change of zone to the CD zone."
A change of zone to the CD zone, that means you're changing from another zone to a CD zone.
Right, I'm just trying to understand, so the, the short answer is that notice did not go out to adjoining property owners.
Right, the only notice was the notice in the paper of the post.
And then the other strange verb about this is that, like in your, in your letter, you say that in a CD zone, it permits bulk storage of coal and fuel as of right, but again, the strange aspect is that 273-21B C says permitted use is anything in a C1, C2, or C4 zone, but under B4, the commission may specify which of the requested uses listed in subsection C will be permitted in that particular CD zone. So I don't know whether this was one of those uses that was permitted or not permitted. Do we have any idea what was?
No, do you mean when this was originally zoned CD?
Yep.
I don't know what uses were specified at that. I'm not even sure when this was rezoned.
So, so we don't know what uses are permitted in the CD zone right now?
Well, only those that are listed there, but nothing's, I don't recall anything specific to this property when this was rezoned. I think it may have been part of the, it may have occurred when the Broadway Mason property was developed. I don't, I don't know.
I remember. It was the Montier, of course, farm at one time. And then we had a proposal for a nursery. And then it became the CD zone with the nursery proposal. That business ceased to exist, and Old Broadway Mason bought the property and revised the site plan to have a nursery there, which they had. And they also sold mulch and stone. So that was the use that was permitted in the zone. That what you're looking at with the parcel on the corner was the rest of the piece that wasn't the lease area. And then they sold the lease area to Old Broadway Mason, which left the piece on the corner still CD zoned.
So what, you could make, you could make the argument that in order to establish the new use proposed would require public hearing.
The CD zone is a very strange, it's a strange zone. There's a reason we're trying to get rid of it. I guess the next question would be if in fact this, if this were approved and we changed the zoning and it was no longer a CD zone, this really wouldn't help you out very much unless you quickly installed whatever you wanted to.
Well, I mean, I think the problem is the application was filed on a particular day. There was a CD zone, the code is the way it was, for better for worse. And we have to take the application as we find it with the code as we find it. So if the requirements have been met in terms of the notice that was required?
I believe they have.
Okay, then that's, the notice has been met for better for worse.
Yes.
Question, going back to the, the notice that was in the newspaper, didn't, didn't the notice that was in the paper actually have the specific language? It's on, what I have on the agenda that says, "In addition to bulk storage and retail sale of propane on parcels of land containing less than four acres." Was that in the public notice?
Yes, there's a copy of the newspaper article right here.
Same exact text that this was
Let me, let me just ask, are there questions from the public that you would like to address to the applicant? Now, this isn't the time to speak for or against the application, we'll get to that. But if you have questions that will help clarify your understanding of the application or whether you want to oppose it or support it, this is the time to ask those questions. So I will ask anyone in the audience, do you have questions of the applicant? Well?
Sure. I'm sorry, can you name an address, please? I'm going to say that J.J. Sullivan looked at a variety of parcels throughout town, primarily industrial zones, and you looked in neighboring towns. Did you at any time attempt to deal, to work with officials of the town on the Planning and Zoning Board or any other elected officials in town so that we can have a town plan in place prior to doing this as opposed to a J.J. Sullivan initiative?
Do we, I'm not sure I understand the question.
I don't know how else to say it. Did you work with the town in any way to develop a plan? Because the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you're aware, has been working on Table 5, which allows various uses of different types in various zones. And the bulk storage of propane was specifically taken out and tabled, if I recollect correctly, a month ago, because they were going to insert it and have it be a permissible use in all industrial zones. And it was brought to everyone's attention that we had an industrial zone over on High Street, which was probably inappropriate for this type of use. Therefore, they decided to table it, so it doesn't exist as a permitted use anywhere in town, is my understanding. So when you went along and started looking at all these properties, did you at any time work with planning and zoning or with the town planner to see where, what might make sense from the, from the town's perspective in terms of a grand plan for where we're going as a town?
Well, we took the zoning map and the regulations as drafted as the plan of development for the town. When we identified this property, we had a meeting in front of the zoning commission, I believe it was the zoning section, the planning section of the Planning and Zoning Commission, to discuss this as a potential option.
Could I elaborate on that? I met on at least one occasion, maybe it was two, with Mr. Beatty, Mr. Sonnerson, representatives of J.J. Sullivan, to talk about alternative ways of identifying properties where propane might be appropriate. I think we talked specifically about this particular property. I believe Brian was also involved. Brian McGlon, our Economic Development Coordinator, we talked about various options as to how to proceed in considering a rezoning.
as to how to proceed in considering a rezoning. The applicant developed this option as the one that they preferred to undertake. So there were at least two meetings, I believe, that we had to discuss this.
Is that answered?
So I just want to be clear then. So that tells me that there is some endorsement by town officials that this is a decent location for this type of use. I'm not trying to be critical of what you've done.
I think you'd have to address that to the town official.
Well, I think, I think George has answered the question.
I know, I did not consider anything that I said to be an endorsement of this proposal. That wouldn't be my role.
And we did not.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Elsa Green. I live on Kenneth Circle, which is very close. The west end of town, there's a ten, was a 10-year plan, or maybe, maybe it's more or less at this point, a 10-year plan for how the, the strip along the post road would be developed from east to west. How does this change that, if, if at all? I mean, I don't understand about zoning. I'm, I'm a fluke player. I don't know.
Yeah, I know. It's very confusing even for us here. Route One West, I think, is what you were referring to, which I believe that was voted on 2001 in that time period. And that set the zoning code, which attempted to do development in that area. That is being re-looked at again now. There is a committee that's in place, that we put in place to take, take a re-look at all of Route One West. The thing that's different here is that any citizen in town has the right to come in and file a petition or an application requesting a change of zoning. Okay? So the applicant has the right to come in and, we don't grant it, okay? There has to be a public hearing. We need to vote on it, but they have the right to request changes to the code, just as you would, or I would, or any, any other citizen in the town. So what's happened is they've come in here and basically have asked to have another use permitted on what turns out to be this one particular lot in that area when you get through all the wording here. So that's what we're here to decide, is if this would be granted and it would allow the bulk storage and retail sale of propane to take place in that lot. And it's, a request that was filed by the applicant, which under the state statutes, they have a right to request. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
I just have a...
Sure, please. Let's go back to the commission.
Mr. Sonics, the, the proposal map of these 230,000 gallon tanks, those tanks have a certain setback from Route One and Moose Hill. Where's the closest point that those, that that proposed plan places the tanks within, from the, from Moose Hill to nearest point on the tank?
Interestingly enough, the setbacks for the tanks are primarily from a building on the site. The National Fire Protection Code requires a 50-foot separation from the tanks to any building on the site, and that's what we provided. The front yard setback, building setback line from Route One is 75 feet to the front of the building. So the building is about 20 feet, roughly 20 feet wide, and then there's another 50 feet. So it's almost 150 feet from the property line, which is off of the pavement. So we're a substantial distance back from Route One. And we're also about 70 feet from Moose Hill Road at the closest point.
And the NFPA in that case, from the Moose Hill side, would require 50 feet or...
50 feet to a building.
50 feet to a building and from the road to the tank?
There's no real, it's just the setback line, the construction setback line on Moose Hill Road, which is 20 feet.
Just 20 feet.
That's what controls where you can build on the parcel.
So our setback controls in this, in this diagram, for the, for the building, really, the NFPA is, is what's pushing you back that far. And from Moose Hill to that tank, we're really, really, the only limit is the town's 20-foot setback.
That's correct.
And currently on this perspective drawing, you have a, approximately a 70-foot setback from the road.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. David, do you have another question?
I do. I have a question specifically to Attorney Beatty. Can you articulate for me what the rationalization is for the partial containing less than four acres, particularly in light of the fact that, two different things. 27321B5 talks about minimum site size. It talks about a CD zone should be, an area should be at least five acres. Why are we coming up with a less than five acre particular use for a particular parcel? What's our, what's our motivation for doing that?
The, the size of this parcel.
The size of the parcel is...
Less than four acres.
So again, it's back to this particular parcel.
Yes.
And then this may be a question both for George and for Attorney Beatty. If, if in fact, we're dealing with the CD zone, and it's a very odd set of ways of governing, it says, "Change in approved use and design after approval of a CD zone." I just lost it, sorry.
Make it Section I, Commissioner.
Change in approved use and design, thank you. After approval, no use shall be changed to another category permitted use without approval by the commission. What is that approval? What level is that? Because it talks about architectural presentation, it talks about traffic consideration. This sounds an awful lot like a special permit rather than strictly setback in bulk. So what do you think the approval is, and more importantly, as the applicant, representative of the applicant, what do you think you're getting if you have this? Do you think it has permitted use site plan?
Yes.
Or do you think it's special permit?
Permitted use site plan.
It doesn't say special permit, so I would say it's something other than a special permit. Certainly implies that it's...
Doesn't say site plan either.
More than a site plan, but less than a special permit. Obviously, you could have a public hearing to consider the change if you want to.
So we, do we know what our level of authority is or are we not sure? The applicant is saying he thinks it's a...
Well, the word "special permit" is not used, so I presume that therefore it's not a special permit. But the level of authority in terms of the amount of discretion you have in terms of approving the, I would say it's fairly substantial and more than site plan, despite virtue of the wording that's included in that section. But it is vaguely written and...
How do we, how do you think we might want to be certain the next month or two months from now, when this in fact comes in front of us, that we have figured out what that level of approval is? I'd hate for the applicant to be here and get approval and then find out that his approval's different than what he thought he was going to have.
I think the problem is it's ambiguous and usually that's construed against the person who drafted it, but in this...
You misstate that every time. Don't worry, you should be okay.
Having said that, no, I don't think so. But having said that, I think if the site plan did come in, we do have the right to send that out for a public hearing.
Absolutely.
So it is, it is something that we could send this out for a public hearing if we so voted on it. So I think that would be the answer. Comes in as a site plan, since it's not a special permit, I know Dr. Elsner said if we wanted to have a public hearing on it, we would need to agree as the commission that it should go to public hearing.
I just, I just wanted to follow up on the, the property owners to these, to the south and southeast, especially to the west. I think there's a lot of open space and there's also a lot of open space, well, actually it's a lot of open space in every direction. But to the east, because this is, right, south is up on this map, so to the...
South is up.
South is up, so to our left, the east, what is the nearest structure to, especially to your proposed placement of tanks on that? I understand we're of course just doing a zoning change tonight, but based on your...
It's the, the Old Broadway Masonry Building. And it's located...
It's off to the right.
It's, it's off, off this map. I'd have to estimate it. I don't have my scale in my hand, but it looks like it's about 125 to 150 feet from...
And that's the closest building in any direction?
Offsite.
Offsite, correct.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any, any other questions? If there aren't at this point, I'm going to ask the public for comments from anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application.
Before we get to that point, I just, just wanted to reiterate what I said before. Maybe I didn't say it clearly, maybe you didn't hear me.
Okay.
But there's no endorsement by me of this application in any of the meetings that I had with the applicant, implied or explicit. I just want to make that totally clear. The mere fact that we talk about options or process or suggest ways of doing things does not imply, in my opinion, any kind of endorsement of a specific proposal, and I don't think the applicant's read anything I said as being an endorsement of this particular approach. Just want to make that totally clear.
Okay. Thank you, George. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please, start with you, Brian.
Brian McLoane, 622 Mulberry Point Road, but also the economic development manager for the town. And just in the interest of full disclosures, George said, I mean, we've had several meetings with the Sullivan folks over time, and we talked about different sites. As Rob went through all the different sites, we tried to collectively come up with a location that seemed to make sense, the best sense, to try to put or allow the Sullivans to continue to grow their business and sustain their business that's been here for nearly 90 years. We have other businesses in town that have similar product. It's all been discussed. They're somewhat grandfathered in here, and we've been putting the Sullivans at a competitive disadvantage by not allowing to find a place that fits and puts, enables them to have bulk storage. So we did go through numerous different options. Did I endorse it? I don't know if, I mean, it was kind of a matter of default of where did we think it was possible? And recognizing the site, and it's next to a site that has had bulk storage granted smaller, I think it's a thousand gallon tank. It's been on the Old Broadway site for years and was used and refilled, garden tanks and grill tanks and so on. So there has been bulk storage lesser degree and retail sales there, so we thought this site next door made some sense. We're taking a property that's been abandoned and trying to revitalize it. As we are looking at the west end, as we, it was noted earlier, we've been looking at the west end. There was a plan put in place back around the 2011 timeframe, but frankly, very little has been developed as a result of that plan. So collectively, as we've been looking at Table Five and different uses in the west end study, we've been looking at the west end to see what kinds of things would fit, that we think fit, and we thought this, or I thought this would fit. I mean, I'm confident, you know, in this, although we're not getting into the full site plan based on the way they have designed their systems in the past for safety and double safety and so on, I'm confident when they come in for a site plan, that that will be met. So just recognizing that this is strategically important to Sullivan Oil continuing on, I was recommending we adopt the language that's been proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Sarah?
Hi, my name is Mark Oskar. I live on 167 Lynnwood Drive. I'm also a member of the Economic Development Commission. And for the same reasons that Brian had just mentioned, I am in agreement that this should be passed. One of the other reasons why we need propane in Guilford that was left out was generators. More and more of us now in town after the last storms have generators installed in our house. And having propane available to us during these storms, or if, when these storms occur again, we want to make sure that these products are available to us to keep our homes warm in the middle of a three-foot snowstorm. Lynnwood Drive was out last year during that snowstorm. That was tough. National Guard had to come to rescue us. But again, I'm in favor of keeping, doing what we have to do as a town to keep a business that has been in town for almost 90 years thriving in this town and in our community. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Okay, going once, going twice? Okay, was, is there anyone who would like to speak against the application? Please.
Do I need to go up there?
It would be easier, but if not, you can just take a microphone and if you feel more comfortable standing off camera, that's fine. Just name an address with a record, please.
Elsa Green. I live at 33 Kenneth Circle. My husband and I lived in there, that house, for 45 years or so. In all the years we've been there, that particular intersection of Moose Hill Road and Route One has been scene of tragedy and confusion and, and the sightlines coming down Route One from Branford are very difficult. Cars make mistakes there. They go into Moose Hill, realize it's a one-way street, turn around, go back out again, making U-turns in front of other people who are trying to turn in there. When Old Broadway went in there, I patronized Old Broadway. Getting out of Old Broadway is not easy because of the rate of tra, speed of traffic coming down Route One from Branford. Trucks there are very scary proposition, and the whole idea of having the propane business right there on that particular corner is, is not something I think, the site is at foresight for that kind of business. I feel strongly. That's it.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against the application? Mr. Chairman?
Could I have added something?
Sure, please. David, would you also mind just telling us what the tragedy was you're referring to?
There were accidents. There've been fatalities on that corner. And there've been, there've been over the years, you can probably go back over there. There's been fatalities and they had to figure out how to reroute Route One, Moose Hill, to go up through Bruce Lane and around and up at the top of the hill, out onto Route One from a whole different venue because that intersection right there on the corner is horrific. And the rate of speed, I was, I don't even think a traffic light would do it because you can't see it in time. Although, you know, maybe someday that's what has to happen there. But I'm also thinking about Hoadley Creek, which is right there and has had, when the gables went in, Hoadley Creek is a huge issue for any kind of development on that whole pristine waterway that goes through there. And Wolf's Way is right there as well. I'm sorry for the Sullivans are having a hard time finding a spot, and I've been the beneficiary of Mr. Sullivan's kindness and Girl Scout troops years ago. But this spot is a poor one as far as I'm concerned. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Anyone else wishing to speak against the application? Sarah, please.
Kenan Kenzie Six Broad Street. We went through this exercise a couple summers ago, and we were successful in keeping bulk storage of propane out of the town center of Guilford. I don't mean to give bully to Sullivans. I think they're entitled to have their business and belong somewhere. But my understanding, maybe incorrectly, two things. One, we have a Route One West study that's been convened, and since that was convened, we've changed one parcel of land to a TS2 zone, the 35 acres on the Sullivan property just west of the one we're talking about tonight. And now we're talking about another zone change right in the face of the commission of this study. So I would prefer to see the study completed and let the people on this committee do their homework and evaluation to see... to see if this particular use is consistent with where we want the town to go, and what we want Route One to look like going forward. Personally, aesthetically, I'm opposed to it, but if the town wants to do it, then so be it. But I think if you look at the plan of conservation and development, this is not consistent with what was written in 2002. We've got three hundred acres of land that we're trying to figure out what to do with, just to the west of this. So I appreciate the Chamber of Commerce wanting to encourage business growth in town, but we're going to probably get about forty-six thousand dollars in tax revenue from this facility, at best, incremental additions to what we currently get from the Sullivan's propane business now. And to put this there, how is this going to be harmonious? Or how is this going to encourage new businesses to locate just down the road from this? Right now, a hundred acres just to the west of this zone for residential housing. Is this going to entice us or others to come in and start building expensive homes if we have this bulk storage facility right there? So to me, the planning part of this equation is severely lacking, and needs to be revised. Done a little homework.
Okay, thank you for your input. Anyone else wishing to oppose the application? Okay, are there any last comments from the applicant, any rebuttal, or? Oh yes, okay, please.
Sorry, Paul. One last thing, my understanding also was, again, I could be mistaken on this, but when we took the discussion of bulk storage of propane out of the Table Five discussion, my understanding was that we were going to have some sort of public forum wherein we could determine where the best location might be for this type of use. That was, I could be dead wrong on that, but we take Bob Jellie and myself, and you all agreed to take Table Five. And so tonight, this seems to me that would completely contradict, at least my interpretation of what we were going to do going forward. If you go ahead and approve this.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I think we took it out of Table Five because we felt that the other proposed changes in there could move forward, and we agreed with some of the arguments that were made by people at the public hearing, that it probably wasn't appropriate in some of those I-2 zones, or I-1 zones down around the town center. So that was the reason it came out, not because we wanted to do a long-term study of propane, was my understanding, but just so that we could move Table Five forward without that divisive issue in there. And then we would take that up at a later time to see if there were zones where it was proposed in the I-2 and I-1 zones. So that was my recollection of that. Are there any other folks who want to speak against this application? Anybody who, from the audience, would like to make any comments, or would the applicant like to rebut, or make any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, we have, if we're all finished with the public comments, I just wanted to ask, does the applicant have any aversion to, to codifying as, as a as a special provision to our approval setbacks from the property line? For instance, fifty feet from Moose Hill Road?
The site is not without some constraints, and we worked hard to lay it out in a manner that we thought was the most sensitive layout, and, but we were constrained. Wouldn't want to move any farther from Moose Hill Road, because we'd be encroaching very close to the wetlands. And as you know, we want to keep as much of a buffer from the wetlands as we can. So I think at this point in time, I would prefer to have that be a consideration that would be looked at closely in a site plan review, and you could direct us to move it a distance. But I think that, in general, we've located the tanks in the schematic layout. The greatest distance from Moose Hill Road, the greatest distance from Route One, maintaining buffers from the wetlands. And I think that those were the kind of push-pull issues that we were looking at. And setting a line in the sand may really be an impediment to some other constraints that the site has.
So you believe at this point that the twenty-foot setback from the property line in every direction is the most appropriate, and other than that, you would just like to follow the NFPA requirements? Which of course you're.
We have to meet the NFPA requirements, and we have greatly exceeded the town's setback from the property line in all cases. But I wouldn't want to get into a situation in which you allowed it to set seventy feet, and we found out that we needed to have it be sixty-eight feet in order to be able to avoid wetlands.
Would the applicant be averse to making that setback the same for any, any truck or other vehicle parked on the site? A twenty-foot setback from the road, for instance?
Yes, we're, this plan respects the setback in all ways. There is we do show some parking, which is permitted within the setback line. I believe that we could move the parking out. The only area that would be difficult for us to move the parking out of the seventy-five-foot Route One setback, because the building is placed at the setback line, and we need to have parking in front of the building. So this parking in front of the building really needs to be with the, and that's a seventy-five-foot setback from Route One. It's a real significant setback.
Sullivan at their River Street site, they seem not to really park the trucks in front, in practice. I was just wondering if there's any codification there that, that you're planning on following anyway that is appropriate above and beyond what you've got?
That would be, the parking that would be in the Route One setback would be strictly commercial parking for people who wouldn't be using the retail facility. It would not be trucks at all. The trucks would be parked in that. There's another reason for that, we have to have a security enclosure. And the security enclosure will go around the entire parking area. The area of bulk storage will be enclosed by it, but the parking in front of the building will not be.
Thank you very much. Okay, so just to be clear, you're saying that the bobtails and any of the trucks that carry the propane will be not in the commercial parking area, they'll be in the enclosed fenced-in area for security purposes?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, yes ma'am, please.
There's going to be a parking lot with people pulling out on Route One right there?
We're showing driveway located as far east on the property as physically possible. That is a two-way driveway entrance. We're not expecting, at this point in time, that the transports would use that entrance and exit. They'd come down Moose Hill Road, onto the site, leave onto Moose Hill, and drive up and back onto Route One. That's just our, this is a very preliminary plan, but that's what we consider.
Drive up, Kenneth, sorry. I'm Richard Green, husband of Olson.
Oops.
That means that the trucks would be coming up Kenneth Circle, around Bruce Lane? Is that what?
Yeah.
That would be a possibility if, we haven't done the traffic study yet. Initially, I would have thought that they would have exited on Route One, but if that is, is that much of a safety issue?
Oh, it'd be insane.
It is insane.
It'd be insane, there are thirty houses with kids, you know? There are thirty houses in that area, in that Kenneth Circle area, with kids.
Think it'd go up as far as Kenneth Circle.
They'd go around Bruce Lane, I guess, but that parking lot, that parking, I mean, the cars can't even have been disallowed to pull out from Moose Hill Road onto Route One, because it's so hazardous.
Okay, one at a time.
But why would we put a parking lot there?
One at a time, so you're concerned about the pulling out of the traffic?
The whole thing there is dangerous with nothing going on.
Okay.
And I, we understand that, and those discussions are certainly ones that would take place at the time of site plan. And I'm confident that it would be addressed, and it's not a great area. You're right, if traffic's too fast, it does come over the hill, the sightline isn't good. But that's the one reason that we moved it as far. And you said that the Old Broadway driveway wasn't even a great one, and that's primarily because people are breaking the speed laws.
Yes, they do.
And, but from a traffic safety perspective, I believe person is professional that all of those issues can't be addressed with site plan.
George, is off-site traffic something that's part of the site plan review? I thought the site plan required onsite traffic, not off-site traffic considerations.
I'm not sure what, I understand what you mean.
Among the things we can look at on a site plan are, I thought, were to ensure that the site has adequate safety considerations for traffic on the site, but you couldn't take into consideration off-site traffic, like what they're talking about of trucks going through the residential neighborhood. Is that something that would be part of the site plan review?
No, you definitely can't.
Where would you point it, tell me about?
You could, I'm not sure what you mean by off-site, but any traffic that's generated by this facility can be considered in your consideration of the site plan, and you can require a traffic study as well, which would include not just traffic movements on the site itself, but also traffic movements to and from the site from the adjacent roads. This, this facility is located on state highways, you know, and the new, and the driveway, the proposed, this hypothetical site plan has a new driveway to Route One, which would require a DOT permit. I would suspect that the DOT, and I would suspect that planning and zoning would probably both want to see a traffic study to address these very issues.
Which we can require.
Which we can require.
And they have considered ingress and egress.
Absolutely.
Factors.
No question.
No, for fact, in one application where it was into a residential neighborhood.
Absolutely, I think those are all fully.
We did take that into careful consideration.
No question, and, and you could require a professional traffic study, which I think would be wise.
Okay, are there any more comments by the applicants, or any of the folks in the audience? Are there any questions or comments from the commission at this time? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, herein, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter, and I'd like to get a motion to approve the Sullivan's agenda.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, first time, if I can get a motion on the Town of Guilford, the Department of Parks application. And let me just also point out that in terms of conditions, whoever reads it, I believe there is the ASDF permit that we need to require prior to the commencement of work, and then Items One, Two, and Three on Kevin McGee's letter, so whoever's going to read the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we need NSDF permit.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a coastal site plan application for the Town of Guilford property located at Chittenden Park, Field Road, and Seaside Avenue, MAP 24, Lot 13, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, for a boardwalk and viewing platform as shown on Chittenden Park, trailhead, five sheets, prepared by William Thompson, AIA dated seven, one, twenty thirteen. This application is approved the following condition, that they follow, they apparently apply for a state SDF permit, and then also three of the motions that, or three of the conditions that Kevin has indicated. Okay, and the conditions are as follows, that stacked hay bales be utilized instead of silt fence. The site plan indicates that a silt fence will be installed around the perimeter of the work area within the area of the tidal wetlands. The insulation of a silt fence will create an adverse impact to tidal marsh. Number two, the Town of Guilford zoning enforcement officers should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures. And number three, waste materials generated by the performance of the work shall be cleaned up daily and disposed of at, at an upland site approved for the disposal of such materials. The application approved based upon a finding that it conforms to zoning code, and it is consistent with the coastal management policy of the state of Connecticut. It is noted that this project also requires a structure dredging and fill permit from the state of Connecticut.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Ray?
Yes.
I, I think that maybe we need to clean up, I think maybe we need to clean up number one, because I think it was stated that the DEEP specifically did not want silt fence or hay bales in the work area, is that correct?
In the wetland area.
In the wetland area, but at the?
The upland area.
Right, the upland areas, they didn't want that part. So maybe you want to limit that to the upland areas, as opposed to for the whole work area?
Kevin has, Kevin will make his statement.
Kevin? Any questions, or are you in a point, since the plans you have right now don't have the new silt lines on, or erosion control lines on, I would hopefully change number one there, that provides us with the updated erosion control plan, which covers what Thomas, I think, is asking for there.
Okay, so then, Peter, are you okay with requiring, providing the plan and limiting the silt fencing to the upland areas?
Yes, as Kevin just.
And who seconded it? Okay, so now let's discuss the application with those changes. Any, any discussion? I mean, to me, it does, obviously, there's been a lot of engineering and thought that's gone into this. The state has been brought in the board so far. All of the comments we've received have been good ones. In addition, we work with the town environmental planner, and I think with the architect, and there's pretty much, well, I think there is agreement on the need for the structure dredging and fill permit for the work to start, and in addition to the conditions that have been attached, as we've modified them. So I'm in favor of granting this application. Any other discussion? Okay, herein, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that's granted. All right, if we can move on to the Amendment to 273-21C, if I can get a motion on that, please. Do you want to?
I wonder.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, I think you need.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve an amendment to the zoning code as follows. And in addition, the bulk storage propane and retail sale of propane on parcels of land containing less than four acres in area and located west of West Lake Avenue, and south of US Route One in the CD zone, is permitted by special permit.
That doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't.
It says motion.
Yeah, that's the motion I'd love to make, Mr. Chairman.
No, he has the right to make the motion, so I think you also want to continue with the amendment is approved based upon a finding.
Correct, the amendment is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the plan of conservation and development. This amendment is effective on October twenty-five, two thousand thirteen.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Well, the original request was for, didn't include the word by special permit, and I, I think we, I personally am against that. We need to vote this up or down based on what the, the applicant has asked for, and if we vote it down, then we, if we wanted to do something else, we could do that.
All right, any other comments?
I am using for this, I'm, well, honestly, Sullivan has incredibly deep roots in our community. They have been supportive of our community. I've done a fair amount of work in emergency management, and my very first memory of Sullivan that I'm aware of was when I was eight years old, and they showed up at my house in the middle of the winter in under ten minutes inexplicably. And that's not really anecdotal, that's really an across-the-board, an across-the-board opinion of Sullivan and their level of service. They provide a level of service that we do not see from similar companies. They provide a level of service for this town that really does matter and makes a huge difference in how we live our lives. But also, as our economic, one of our economic development commissioners mentioned, they also provide, allow support for us in, in times of need, specifically in emergency situations, especially snowstorms or hurricanes. Frankly, it would be really great for us to have a facility like this in town. They mostly elated my concerns about this site. This site is much, much better in many material ways than the other one, and I have to say that I think that we will be better off not just keeping them here because of tax revenues that people often focus on very heavily, but also because of, because of the kind of support that they can provide from this site that they could not support from another site, they couldn't support us the same way from another site. We don't want them to move out of town, not just for the extra maybe forty thousand dollars in tax revenue, but we also want to keep Sullivan here for a host of other reasons. And I included special permit because I was a little bit concerned that the way this was drafted, you know, either intentionally or not, the way this was drafted seems to avoid any kind of public hearing. And I think to keep, ultimately, we still, we, we still move it forward by allowing a special permit, but we do not, we don't provide the as-of-right that they were asking for, but ultimately, if the plan meets our specifications, the outcome is the same. Thank you.
Can I make this statement?
Thank you. Sheriff, Peter.
Let me have the microphone, thank you. The Sullivan's have been around since nineteen twenty-four. They've always been in the, the energy business, you know, they provided fuel for heating homes, and they started at coal, you know, obviously, coal kicked out, became dirty, and there were other cheaper materials such as heating oil. Heating oil, as we know, President Obama says, get off oil in general, use alternative energy. Governor Malloy, front page of Hartford Times has indicated we have to start using natural gas, and in areas where natural gas doesn't make sense, we need to go with LP gas. I'm on board with the directors at Old Saybrook Bracket Club, we went to LP gas, we saved about thirty, forty percent, it's more efficient. This is not a new company, this company's been around since nineteen twenty-four. They have been in this business, and we're trying to make it difficult for them to continue in the energy business. We have a lot of people in Guilford, not everybody is high net worth individuals in households, there are certainly individuals that are in the gent that are trying to get by. High price of heating oil could really reduce their standards of living. They need to be able to get LP gas, they need to be able to get it locally. If it's being shipped in from New Haven or Old Saybrook, whatever, there's going to be a surcharge. And what they have right now, there, it's in, in going to LP gas, it's basically a continuation of an existing business they've had since nineteen twenty-four. They provide fuel to heat homes, and I think we have to be flexible and provide them an opportunity where they can continue to be in this town. We have approved LP gas storage in two other sites, and we need to find a home, and I think this might be a better place than some of the other locations, and basically what I saw today, demonstrations by several individuals, I think they did their homework. Now, not everyone's going to be happy, but unfortunately, we have to find a home for them.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I'm going to probably just concentrate not so much on taxes or, you know, the fuel itself, but more just on land use. Ordinarily, I would tend to agree with the special permit, but because this is only one lot that this can occur on, I mean, I think we pretty much have a course of what's going to occur here, we do have a schematic. Now, if there were five, six, seven, fifty lots in that zone, which the way this is worded would permit it, I think I would definitely be in favor of a special permit. But we pretty much know what we're getting here, since there is the only, the one parcel that this is going to apply to the way it's written. I would also point out that we can request, we can vote and have a public hearing on the application if we still permit. And the, to my, my opinion, the way the regulation is worded, while we may not have all of the powers that we would to attach conditions or whatever, that we would special permit, it's still more than a site plan, and we still have taken into account the traffic, which is something we've heard a lot about from the public tonight. I think it's a consideration we're definitely going to have to take into consideration when and if a site plan comes in on this, and I think that's probably the more appropriate time to deal with that rather than hypothetical. So, may a long story short, I'm, I don't think we need in this case the need for a special permit. I would be in favor of granting the amendment as it is and not attaching to it the need for special permit. Anyone else wishing to make a comment on this matter?
If I, Ray, if I remember correctly, the table five chart of uses, when we got to propane, which we've since taken out of table five, had propane bulk storage listed as special permit, just to take into account all of the particular considerations, you know, it's a relatively controversial and potentially dangerous use of property, and special permit was felt by the table five committee to allow for the most discretion for the commission to, to review it. I don't think it's, and then, and on top of the fact that as I was asking George, I mean, the CD zone is ambiguously phrased, and I'm not entirely clear what exactly are our powers and authority to impose certain restrictions that do seem to be above and beyond the site plan, but don't seem to be quite the same thing as a special permit, and rather than live in that world of ambiguity, why don't we simply go ahead and, in keeping with the table five recommendations, to the extent that this property is appropriate, make it a special permit process. Having said that, just broadly speaking, I don't think this is good planning in the sense that we are looking at Route One West, we are looking at propane as a sort of use and where it ought to be, and to be doing this on one particular parcel, to be doing it in a way that strikes me as being under the radar in the sense of you have to have your assessor map out to figure out what this public hearing was about. And the fact that right now propane is not a permitted use in our zoning regulations, which is, you know, zoning regulations are part of our comprehensive plan, and then the fact that this is specific to one parcel only strikes me as being a clear example of spot zoning, which is a somewhat antiquated term, but it actually fits here because it is one particular parcel, and the use is contrary to our comprehensive plan. That's my overall disagreement with this, because I don't think we're doing good planning here, but to the extent that we've listened to the applicant, we've listened to people's concerns, I think the special permit is the best way to address the ambiguity of the CD zone, and that's why I think that the text that's proposed by Walter is maybe the best way to go.
Okay, are there any more comments? Okay, if not, then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion which includes the requirement for a special permit? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, it looks like we have four to three, so we have a special permit requirement with this, so this is passed with the requirement that it should come in with a special permit. Okay, moving on, we have the site plan review, this is the use of Guilford two twenty-four fifty-five Boston Post Road. Site plan revision to increase the size of medical office building, add decks to the east side of the townhouses, and relocate the location of building separation, change the category of retail building from merchandise to include food and clothing. Receive and make action. I can get a motion to receive?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, it's received.
Ray, you skipped over table five, I'd recommend to you table consideration of that.
Yeah, right, we're not going to be prepared tonight with a clean draft and all of the text changes that are necessary, so why don't we just go back to that, I was going to do that later, but let's table that until the November sixth meeting.
You do have, you do all have the clean copy of the proposed language. What you don't have, I think you got that tonight, the new, the new version?
In the packet.
In your packet. What you don't have is the updated text that goes along with that for all the various zones, where we have the permitted uses described in the text, I'm still working on the consistency of that, so I'd like to get that done before I, before we actually move into consideration of it, so I think tabling it is the right thing to do.
We need to move it.
Yes, and I have a motion, please. To table it until the November sixth meeting, I believe.
Move to table till November sixth.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's Carrie, please.
Hi, I'm John Matthews, I'm an architect in the office of the East End, the Boston Post Road in Madison, and I'm here regarding the use of Guilford property, which is something that's been around since two thousand and five, the former Guilford tavern, which the people in reference. This is helping to reborn the west end of town, it's been sitting dormant here now for, for quite some time. I was involved with a previous application that was approved by this board, construction that started there, the financial woes happened, and the developer went away. My client, Mr. Z, who's in the audience here tonight, purchased the property earlier this year, he is intent on completing the project and enhancing it above where it was originally approved, and there are three things that we have before you tonight. The first is to add, add balconies to the rear of the townhouses to make these townhouses more attractive for the market that we see, and I have a photo here of the actual balconies that we are looking to add to the back of the townhouses. The way that regulations are written, the decks, and there's a deck on the first floor, they became coverage, and so we had a coverage issue, we went to ZPA, we got approval for our increase in coverage, and a couple of places we had a setback issue, those were granted. Also, the original proposal of the house that was in the back, it was being converted to a medical building, prior developer had put on the addition that you guys approved, or not the addition, but the foundation. My client, his engineer who's here tonight, we studied the site and found that we could add some additional space to that building, so now we are proposing it to be a two-story medical building, complete with an elevator. We have all the necessary septic, we have the parking, but we did need part of our coverage increase because of the footprint with the deck, so it was a trade-off, again, that was granted by the ZPA several months ago. And as part of the work with the townhouses, this was the original site plan that was approved, it had a five-foot accessway that the fire marshal really wanted somewhere between the retail and the end of the townhouses, and looking over the site, and we had issues with separation, fire separation between the retail and the townhouses, we were proposed to relocate that five feet, actually between the retail building and the townhouse, which makes a lot more sense, solves an awful lot of problems. And then this is the expanded footprint, the tan that you see on the medical building, the original was in pink, that expansion was here, required us shifting the parking down a little bit, and we still have the required number of spaces. So the one-story medical building, before I leave that, just briefly, because we have the townhouses, so the back of the townhouses, the front stays the same, now we have the five-foot gap between the townhouses and the retail, but there's a balcony on the second floor that actually hooks into that, and that provides pedestrian access through. So the balconies are in the back of the townhouses, and we enlarged the single doghouse dormer to a double windowed doghouse dormer, which we felt looked an awful lot better in the ratings than it did originally. So that takes care of the revisions to the townhouses. is on Westlake Avenue, we wanted to keep it very residential in scale, because there are some houses up the street, and so this is the, the two-story building. We did go to the design review committee, and they endorsed this. This would be the actual color scheme that we'd be using on the building. This is a photo of a house, I think it's in East, East Adams possibly, but that's the color scheme that we would be using on that building.
Let me just say, all of this has been through design review and they approved it?
Yeah, we've been to design review with all of these actually twice, because we went initially with ZPA, and we came back again, because we tweaked it a little bit before the P and Z application. So the third part of our request is the, the front building, we'll have, we'll use John's. First part is, third part is the forty-five hundred square foot footprint retail building. My client has a desire and a method and a means to put in a sort of a neighborhood health club, including a pool inside the building, and so this would be something that the residents of the nine townhouses could use, as well as other people in the neighborhood and the town, it would be a small, private health club spot, and we think that would actually be a great asset to this, to this end of town. So that's approximately what the pool would look like. And again, we have had our engineers talk to the town, the building officials, the health officer, and we have solved any issues that they would have, you know, there's no impact on the septic from the pool, it's not the kind that, you know, flushes into the septic system every day. So that will create, we feel, a change to the building. This is the Westlake Avenue facade of the building, these two windows and the door exist, this is a big blank wall on a big blank roof. This is a big blank wall on a big blank roof. So the pool would be located in that structure. We would add some very large windows looking out to the west, and there's one looking north at the townhouses. And then this would be like an open cathedral ceiling. Again, to unlike this photograph, this happens to be similar. And that would actually be the pool. It's thirty feet by fourteen and eighteen, because it has this shape to it. There are two changing rooms, and then there's an open area where exercise and classes could be held and some equipment. But not a turn this way. So this was originally approved. This is retail, commercial use, and we'd like to add, I guess it's a recreation use. It's not real clear in the regs kind of how this falls, but that's what we've had a call with George and Reggie's input. So that's our modification. And then we do have a completely new landscape plan. John Cunningham is here, which he presented. This is actually the floor plan of that building, moving on, is here. This is the building. This is the pool. And it essentially take over the whole, the whole building. It is set up, this app could still be potentially rented as a retail use.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you pour any again?
Yeah, this is group one. This is West Lake. This is the edge of the first townhouse as they start. This is the east, east property. This is the five-foot, actually it's only six feet with the, just the way the building is.
And that's the pool?
This is the pool here.
And these are, Carrie, the frontage spaces are going to be retails, many like stores?
No, this, this is all part of the pool spot.
That's all part of the pool spot.
And then potentially this is as well. What I'm saying, the way the building is set up, this could still be potentially rented off as a retail.
I'm sorry, I was looking at zoning.
So we think this is a great use for this building. Also, it will be a great facility to have in the area.
Okay, questions for the applicant?
I would like to have John Cunningham tell you the new landscape plan.
Okay, John, why don't you cover that, and then we'll see if there's any questions with regard to the.
Good evening, my name is John Cunningham, owner of TEC Landscape Design, located at 62 Wall Street in Madison, Connecticut. West Lake app, and move on. Apparently simple landscape plan. White trees that are not covered are existing, and we're leaving them in the site. Grouping sugar maple here, grouping white pine, not laying on property in this area. We're suggesting some new street trees, both along Boston Post Road and West Lake app. I suggested both, which is a design review, towards like that, that's a real street tree. That's a real master. The inside apartment, we chose to use a, what I call a small shade tree. So we have some different scale happening from the road back inside. We suggested hedge maple, or the native trees, one of the smaller ones. We suggested a small, very small ornamental tree, end of these little garden areas. They're going to put in the townhouses, single stem shad. All the plant material on the plant is native. Okay, these dark green areas are just plant embeds. I added some pepper green head, just to soften some of the coughers. I'm looking for all the different varieties. I think it's, I think it's going to be a very nice look for you.
And again, this went to design review, and they were, okay.
They're great.
Okay.
The tree in the far lower left-hand corner, they were, at design review, they were trying to talk you into adding that one?
Yes, correct.
It's, that's, all right, did you have any, initially you didn't have it there. Did you have any concerns about power lines or anything else?
No, the power lines, if you look at the poles, the power lines are my tenants. The trees themselves are about twenty feet, the trunk of the tree is about twenty feet away. So the older time, power company would have to prune that side of the tree, but they're not underneath the power line. That's what you really want to try to avoid.
Same question about those trees. I mean, is this, is that the driveway, is that an existing driveway?
Yes, yes.
And are there trees there now?
No, the only trees that are here now are the trees without any cover.
Well, I mean, as someone who might want to use that place, I'd be very concerned about line of sight. If I'm going to use that front driveway getting out to, onto Route One.
Well, the base, yeah. Trees are taking the top of the tree, right?
It's a single trunk. It's like a shade tree. It's, like you round on scale, it's probably twenty-seven feet off the edge of the road. So if you were to pull out here, in your car is where my fingers are, your line of sight is fine. This is also a proposed side of the grass and shelves. And you're not concerned about the trees or the sight line? Oh, okay.
Would you mind also just showing us the difference in separation on this from the old plan? The revision of the building separation?
Well, what had happened originally, these, these three units were tight against the retail. And there was a five-foot walkway through in this area.
Okay.
And so the fire marshal just wanted him not to have to go from one end to the other. And actually, he liked the idea of separating the retail from the townhouses. Made a lot of sense, and it solved a lot of fire building code separation issues that we were struggling with.
And that separate, that separation is new to this revision?
Right. Yeah, there's no windows. These are this long. What I would like to talk to some of the pool, which right in this much larger area.
Thank you.
We also have Frank Magana here tonight, who is the site engineer for drainage and septic, if there's any.
Are there any significant changes from what was approved with the drainage or the septic?
No.
Okay, so pretty much what has already been approved?
I'll let Frank get to that.
Okay.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Frank Magana, a consulting engineer from the office on Main Street. I was retained by the owner to take a look at the changes to the septic system primarily for the medical, the small medical building. The, if you recall, the original pool for this site was confined to a certain gallons per day of flow for, for the entire complex, based on the previous occupation by the tavern. The, that flow could not be exceeded for the main building, which has the retail and the condominiums, the townhouses. In doing so, we also looked at the expansion of the small medical building and expanded that septic system to accommodate that. That was the primary change as far as the leaching or septic systems for the medical building. We did not, could not change the system for the main retail building and the townhouses. That was fixed, based on the local state approvals. So we could not alter that. We did have a little bit of flexibility with the medical building. And that system, I redesigned that system and basically shuffled one or two trenches around to make that system work better, particularly after we did some additional soil testing near the front, around the front of that building, which we found some very good soils there. And get out of, from, you know, from over the existing leach field that covered a good portion of that site. So we were in virgin soil, virgin soil. So we were able to accommodate those changes very easily. And Mr. Johnson had basically looked at that last week and basically approved it the way I had submitted it. There are no, no real changes to the drainage system from the original design. Again, that, that old design, the stormwater detention and catch basin were basically pretty much fixed. We are not changing any part of that on the site as far as runoff and drainage. So that system would remain exactly as it was approved, as your previous site plan.
Okay.
Just, just for clarification, surely there must be an increase of wastewater use from retail to spa pool?
Okay, that's a, that's an issue I talked with Mr. Johnson about also. Basically, the pools and spas that are being put in that building, they cannot be discharged into the septic system. They're in public order there. They can use the public order to fill those, but they cannot drain them into the septic system. There is a process that is quite commonly used with pools and areas where they don't have sanitary sewers, that you can get a permit from DEP to properly disinfect the pool and spa water. There's a process and a test that we do. And then you are able to discharge that with permit into the storm drains. So they do not ever go into the septic system.
What storm drains?
Storm drains on, on property.
On Route One, right? There's a storm drain on Route One?
Well, there's storm drain on property. There's storm drain on the property.
Okay. No, but I was, I was just envisioning that people, I don't go to the store and take a shower very often, but I might go to the spa and take a shower.
Right. Now, we looked at a number of facilities very similar to this with a pool and spa and a shower, and a lavatory, and that were on a public water system. We got information on quarterly meter readings and water that those facilities use, and related them to this type of facility. And we were able to show that we would not exceed the allocated daily sewage flow rate that we were locked into on this building, with presence of the pools and the showers. Again, because those pools are not, not that pool water is ever discharged.
Yeah, no, I'm not worrying about the pool water. I'm just envisioning that everybody who goes presumably is going to take a shower before they jump into the pool, and maybe take a shower after they jump out of the pool.
Possibly when they, when they, when they go in, usually now after they leave. Plus, people using it from the townhouses would probably not use the shower there. They would probably go back there and get.
You do have a memo from Dennis.
Right, I was going to read that. But it is what it is. It's dated October 16th from Dennis Johnson. The applicant's proposed public pool and health club is a compatible accessory use for the site. Adequate capacity exists. Proposed septic system to accommodate the expected daily discharge of wastewater from the proposed use. So, I agree, there's a lot of detail there, but basically he's saying it's approved.
Another aspect of the pools is that the, they don't use backwash to clean filters in these systems. They don't want to use backwash. The old nitrogen filters, those type of filters are not going to be necessary in a facility like this. They basically use removable filter cartridges that they take out and replace. They take them and wash them off, and they can reuse them. So there's no backwashing of filters or things like that, which would, you know, take up a lot of water, and that would have to go to the sanitary sewer.
Okay, other questions from any of the commission members?
One point I would like to add to the gentleman's question about the sight line. The state of Connecticut uses a fifteen-foot setback from the edge of the pavement as their point where the sight line is drawn from. So, you know, that sight line is not far enough back, far enough back from the road to be affected by that.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions from the commission? If not, maybe I can get a motion?
I'll try to read it. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan revision for the Muse of Guilford 2455 Boston Post Road, map 84, lot 28 and 29. Revision to increase the size of the medical office building. Add decks to east side of townhouses and modify building separation and change retail building to include a pool and health club. As shown on general site plan C1 dated 10/7/13. Building elevations A5 dated 9/24/13. Medical office building elevations A6 dated 9/24/13. Retail building floor plan A1 dated 10/2/13. Retail building section and elevations A2 dated 10/2/13. Site plan modification 103 dated 7, I'm sorry, 10/7/13. Landscape plan LP-1 dated 9/21/13. This application is approved based upon a finding that it would, that with the variance granted, it conforms with the zoning code.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, design review has reviewed most of the architectural changes and building changes. I tend to agree with David that the letter we have from Dennis is a little bit light on detail, but fortunately, the engineer was here who, I think, filled in a lot of the blanks and gave us some additional detail as to why the septic system would be appropriate. So with that additional information, I'm okay with approving the application. Any other comments?
Parking is adequate for a change of, I mean, I guess we're calling it a recreational facility. Would we stop?
It meets the code.
Okay. So it's been reviewed by staff in terms of the code with the variance, as far as your analysis indicates it meets.
We don't have a different standard for recreational facilities.
For parking, no, I didn't see that. I saw specific for retail, but I didn't see anything specific for that.
But in your best professional judgment, it would be adequate?
Well, it's, it meets our regulation.
Okay. All right then, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of receives. The first one is Malgreen 40 Rock Point Land. This is a campsite plan for grading and planning of a new lawn and replace the rock seawall within 100 feet of Coastal Resource. Receive and set a public hearing from November 6th.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sullivan Regina, 4 Milford Road. This is a special permit for an accessory apartment in a single-family dwelling. Receive and set a public hearing dated November 6th.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the bill. Shore Publishing, we got a July bill for $309.57. A September bill for $311.57. We've got a bill from KG Graphics for $105. And a bill from WB Mason for $2598. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a bill.
Motion, pay the bills.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll pay the bills. Approval of the minutes. We've got two here. The first one is September 18th, the second one is November 2nd. We'll take the September 18th one first.
I have a quick point of clarification, even though I recuse myself in both of these things. From the Highland House, September 18th, it talks about current shed is eight foot by 12, and the new one is going to be eight by 14. And then when they came back, and it's in the September 20, I'm sorry, October 2nd minutes, it says the shed is going to be 12 by 12, replacement in the pine. Does anybody know what size the shed's really going to be?
The shed is maintaining its existing footprint. The, the first presenter had, had asked us to extend it by two feet in a couple of directions, one of which was toward a tree, another one of which would have required an extra variance, correct? And so now.
Whatever it is now, that's what it has to be.
So presumably it's eight by, so the second, the October 2nd should probably say that the shed's going to be eight by 12?
That's correct.
It's still, I'm getting waved off here.
No.
Twelve by 12.
He said he remeasured it, and it's 12 by 12. The previous measurements were incorrect.
So both measurements on the first meeting were incorrect?
Yes.
And it is currently 12 by 12, so, so the meeting minutes are accurate, even though the measurements are inaccurate.
If I go out there with a tape measure?
Whatever it is now, that's what it has to be.
I get you one from the hardware store.
I'll be there.
We approved the existing footprint, so hopefully we know what that is.
They had one in my truck if you.
Let's go out there.
Well, the applicant represented it on what was approval. It was 12 by 12. And that's, so that's what we approved. All right, be that as it may, is there anything else on the September 18th minutes that anybody'd like to update, change, modify, et cetera? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote on it. All in favor of approving the 18 minutes?
Aye.
Okay, they're approved. How about the October 2nd?
I, I, you know, I sometimes vote in a way that I didn't intend to, but I think it says in here, I opposed the, what was it called? The Joint Effort LLC.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 11 of 13, and it says, two-thirds of the way down, in favor, and then it says opposed cost. And I don't, I don't think I opposed it.
Okay, you think you voted for it?
I think I voted for it, yeah.
I thought everything was unanimous in that meeting, but if you. I thought everything was unanimous in that meeting, but if you, I mean, you, you would know best, Tom, so if you're saying that you had voted for it.
It's been a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, not that it's, it's going to matter since it's already the majority, but it is important we get it correct, so why don't?
I don't know, I can't.
I remember you had to go.
And even looking at this, I can't imagine why in the heck I would have opposed it.
Okay, so then we need to correct.
I didn't oppose it.
Right, we need to correct the minutes to show that was unanimous. Seven, four. Everybody was in favor, none opposed. Any other changes to those minutes?
We have to amend the motion.
Yes, we do. I just, just want to get the discussion. Okay, with that change, can I get a motion?
Move to amend the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of passing the amended minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, one, right, one abstention since obviously Rich wasn't here. Okay, having no more business before us, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, we're, okay, we're adjourned.